I had, I know, I never noticed it before.
Right on line.
It is?
Yeah, I wonder.
I never, ever noticed it.
Well, she created news.
This is the first time you're seeing it.
You probably would have noticed it.
I don't think she didn't notice it.
We'll call the Water Pollution Control Authority and Town Council meeting to order for Tuesday, November fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, at seven oh three P. M. We'll start first with Salute to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lisa, you're gonna swear us in?
Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as mayor for the town of North Ramford, to the best of your ability, so help you God?
Yes.
Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as deputy mayor for the town of North Ramford, to the best of your ability, so help you God? Congratulations. I can have the rest of the council's hand, please. And raise your hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as members of the town council for the town of North Ramford, to the best of your abilities, so help you God?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
We also need the photo for the new term, so if we could do that.
Wanna do that now?
Yeah. Do like a pyramid.
As long as you have to stand.
You want half, you can stand behind.
Yeah. Five and four. Four sit down, and five stand up.
These are the new members of our Board of Education. Shawna Hoppa-Holzer, Elizabeth Sienna, and Helen Handel-Ward. Please, do you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as members of the Board of Education?
Pardon? Yes, you.
Congratulations.
Mayor Duty.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Here.
Counselor Diamond.
Here.
Counselor Fawnin.
Here.
Counselor Miller.
Here.
Counselor Rose.
Here.
Counselor Big Leon.
Here.
And Counselor Zampano.
Here.
Okay, next item is appointment of clerk to council and establishment of compensation thereof.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Michelle Pollak as the council to the clerk, and the establishment of the compensation is two hundred and fifty dollars per meeting, plus twenty-five dollars per hour over a two-hour limit.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Big Leon.
Yes.
And Counselor Zampano.
Yes.
Next is appointment of town attorney.
I'd like to make a motion for the appointment of Vincent Marino as town attorney.
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Big Leon.
Yes.
And Counselor Zampano.
Yes.
Okay, next is establish.
That'll be the same rate as the current attorney.
That is.
That is correct.
The billing may be a little bit different on there, but he said he would work within whatever is the budget for this year.
Next is establishment of times and places for regular meetings. We have a calendar. Meeting schedule. Anyone wanna approve the meeting schedule?
I was close with the M. A. F.
It's down, it's down.
It's on page, page is fourteen. I make a motion to approve the agenda for meetings as submitted.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Big Leon.
Yes.
Counselor Zampano.
Yes.
All right, next we'll move into Order Pollution Control Authority Agenda. Correspondent citizens and statements under Water Pollution Control. Seeing none. Unfinished business, there's nothing listed. New business, nothing listed. Citizen statements and petitions under Water Pollution Control. Moving to the regular Town Council agenda. First item is Town Manager's report. Proposed text amendment for zoning regulations.
Yeah, there are two items here on your agenda, just more of informational. Carrie had put together a memo outlining the request to amend zoning regulations for farm brewery. I guess, I think this comes after the state had approved a new law for farmers to be included in growing and manufacturing and allowing for sale of beer on their property. So, there is interest here locally, and I think she's responding to that with a proposal to go forward with that under a special use permit.
That's gonna go to the town attorney?
You certainly can. So, get that to him tomorrow.
Okay.
I don't understand how this can go forward in its current form. It was already objected to at planning zoning. And would you please ask the town attorney to give special attention in the evaluation to the definition section under the proposed text amendment? Because the way it's been drafted is that this cannot be accessed as a business unless the place or premises has been farmed by the same family for a minimum of ten years, which precludes anyone coming into town to begin a business, to purchase any farmland that may be available, to provide additional people who want to enter this particular business. And, quite honestly, I fail to see how it helps the entire enterprise. But I also wanna say I'm a beer drinker, and I look forward to farm brewery greatly. But I just don't understand that. And that was raised as an objection at, at planning a zoning.
Second item was, if there are no other comments, I'll make sure I talk to the new town attorney tomorrow, and Carrie will review that. But the next item is Police Department phone system.
Can we all be confident of the outcome of that conversation? I think that'd be helpful.
That would be very helpful. Thank you for suggesting it.
Lieutenant Lovelace is here to talk about the telecommunications phone system there, and there's money in the budget, but he's looking for direction, or actually, your go-ahead to allow them to do the bid process for developing a bid package for that system.
So, the good news is that I'm not asking for any money. The two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen budget, it was appropriated ten thousand dollars in a capital expense to put towards an automated call attendant. Basically, what that is, is when you call the non-emergency number at the P. D., it's press one for dispatch, press two for records, press three, and so on. The goal of it is to take non-emergency calls that don't need to be handled by the dispatcher, and leave them more time to handle the emergency response procedures and the radios. So, after I went out and we, as we put the nine-one-one system in, when they came in, they said, "In the future, you really gotta look at a new phone system." It's pretty old, it's an analog system, we can make it work, we just don't know how efficiently we're gonna be able to make it work. And we've had a couple failures that have been corrected, but it's hard to get parts for a system that's thirty years old. They don't make them anymore, you're going on Amazon, you're, this is where they have to go to get these new cards and stuff. So, using that budget, I went out and I called the first company, and I said, "Give me the top-of-the-line number, come in and look at our system." They came back with a number of about thirty-five thousand dollars for a Cisco system. I called the second company, and I said, "Top-of-the-line's not gonna work, give me the next, next one, we're coming to about twenty-five thousand." I called the third company, I said, "This, we have about ten thousand dollars, give me something that's gonna work, is gonna bring us into the future, and something we could build on as, as time goes on." They didn't think they were gonna be able to do it, but they came back with a bid, or a price of about ninety-three hundred dollars. So, it's, it's a combo system. The problem with the P. D. is then the I. P. phones require the whole entire P. D. to be rewired, Cat five, Cat six line. That's where the major cost is coming in for the, for the other phones. This system that you have there is a Mitel. It's one of the top three reputable companies in the U. S. It will do the call attendant, it will do any voicemails coming in, it'll, it'll make them into emails, so officers will automatically, detectives will automatically get notified. It has all the options we need, and it's, it's within the money that's already been set aside. So, the goal is, with your approval, I'd like to, to sit down with purchasing and, and put up the bid specs to get that out there, to see if we can, we can make this project happen.
Lieutenant, this will help, like in the future with dispatch and freeing up, you know, like non-essential calls coming?
Absolutely. So, most of our calls that come into the, during the day, or I shouldn't say most, but there's a large amount that call, come in just for records, or come in for detectives in the bureau, and the dispatcher won't have to answer any of those calls, it'll be just pushing the button, and it'll go to that office, or that extension, or the officer's extension. It's, so, taking away ten, twenty, thirty, forty percent of the calls is only gonna benefit the dispatchers all the way down the line. So, and this is a system that could be turned into an I. P. system in the future, if there's any work that's done to the P. D. At that point, the only thing that'll be different is because these are analog phones, you would just have to purchase I. P. phones, which the cost is extremely low, considering, considering doing it now, and you're looking at a twenty to thirty thousand dollar price tag. So, without adding anything to the capital expense for this year coming up, or anything like that, we already have the money, which has been verified through finance, that it is there. And that's, so that's trying to get this project done without having to come and ask for money and something.
Now, these bid specs that you received that came in at the ten thousand dollar range, is this a company's proprietary system, or are people gonna be able to bid on this type of a system?
People will be able to bid on this type of system, so it might even come in cheaper. This is, the last company brought in was Frontier, and they're the ones that maintain our system now, so they're most familiar with it. But this is, this is something other companies could come at.
You're not gonna, you're not writing a bid spec that's gonna end up being single-source?
No, no. That's, that's not the goal. The goal is that we come out the cheapest, but they get the best product.
Mitel's a common business system phone.
Just putting it out there.
Well, I was at a budget subcommittee meeting on Monday night with the Board of Ed, and the superintendent had mentioned that they are also in the process of, you know, looking to change their phone system, and that he had been in contact with you because the police department was looking. Is there any possibility that these, that we can put out one bid for the two?
From talking to them, and I was down there at other batters, and I heard that they were going through that, so I figured I'd get, they got some more I. T. tech savvy guys than, than I am, so I wanted to run back to the Mitel name by them and see what other information I could get. They're going with an I. P. based right now, and that's not the forte of the Mitel model that we were looking at. Not to say we have to stick with the Mitel, but we're looking at the analog right now, with a hybrid version that we could convert into an I. P. in the future. So, I'm not sure if that's something they wanna get in on. I can, I can call Scott and, and see what his feelings are on that, but I think it's gonna be kind of two different phone systems that we're looking at right now.
Okay.
Unless we go further and put more money towards a more expensive product down the line, but.
Did you say that the policeman would get an email if they got a phone call, it would transfer to an email for that?
Yeah, so, when the phone calls come in, you leave a voicemail message, instead of detectives not knowing, and officers not knowing, and their days off and everything, it's automatic, it transfers into, to an email. We get our emails on our phones, and it just, the technology's been there for years, we're just, it's time for us to, to catch up.
I think that's great.
So, it has, it has, you know, everything we need without being, you know.
Exactly.
Exactly, so.
Have a consensus? Everybody in favor of moving ahead? You have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, I have one other item of importance regarding the notification from D. E. P. about the underground storage tank at Stanley P. Williams. This was an item that came up before the council some time ago, and we put it on the back burner, waiting for the, obviously, state budget and funding to get that done. D. E. P. has looked at it, and it's given us notice of violation, and a notice or an order to correct within thirty days. So, I've been working with Fran and Bill Chody. I will be attempting to call D. E. P. tomorrow to request an extension and, and explain our intention to replace the tank, and what they want us to do is replace those electrodes or the connections so they can be monitored, and we weren't gonna spend ten thousand into a new tank that was gonna come out of the ground in, in a year anyway, 'cause that's the, the end of the life cycle for that tank. So, I'm gonna be requesting their extension and, and explaining our plan to get it fixed, but it's gonna require the council to authorize the expenditure allocation for about six thousand dollars, I believe, for, for that tank. And that would be using the old tank that was here at Town Hall, that's encased, encapsulated, and putting it up there, but it needs a, it needs a crane and to get that in there and get it connected and hooked up.
So, when are you looking to do that?
We're, we're looking to move right, right away, and, and I think, hoping to be successful tomorrow with D. E. P., getting an extension, and having the council approve the funding on the December fifth meeting.
Is there a pad for that, or we have to install a pad?
I don't believe there's a pad for that.
Yeah, there's a pad with.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Okay.
We did a tank, I think it was at the other school up there, right? We, we did another tank about five years, six years ago at T. V.
The, the other, well, there was our big tank for the fuel, and there's one tank at the intermediate school, above Brown Confall, the big Confall thing. Now, we moved the one that was from here, it's up in my yard, so it's, it's available to use as a pad and stairs, we just gotta get it up there at the school.
Need a motion on that, Michael?
Uh, no, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, and we'll, we'll bring it back for the December fifth meeting, but, but for, just, if it's okay, if there's consensus here, Fran and I will be working on the plan and, and moving in that direction, pending your, your approval on the fifth for the funding.
Yep.
We'll get things lined up.
Everybody's in favor there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we gotta move forward.
All right, you have your consensus. All right, next item is Appointment Resignations. Appointment of Lynn Reardon, Democrat, to Board of Education, term to expire at eleven, twelve, nineteen.
So, as you know, Lynn stepped up to fill a vacated seat on the Board of Ed about a month ago, and the town clerks told us another vote is required, which is what this agenda item is about. It's always difficult to find willing people who will contribute their time and energy, and they're valued and appreciated, so I'm pleased to make the motion to appoint Lynn Reardon to the Board of Education for a term to expire eleven, twelve of nineteen.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, I feel that I need to say something just based on my vote from last month, and I voted yes last month with reservations, and I figured, I too appreciate the fact of anyone stepping up to the plate to fill vacancies, unports and commissions, and I felt that I would give the month before she was up for a reappointment to see exactly how she filled that position. And unfortunately, I was disappointed in some of her actions on the board. And I guess my biggest disappointment was, the first one was attending an illegal meeting with some other Democrats from the Town Council and other members of the public, which was an illegal meeting under the guise of a caucus. And then, also not following the board bylaws in regards to the, specifically, the bylaw of P. ninety fifty regarding the chair. I felt it was very disrespectful of Lynn to post the passing of Alan Davis on Facebook when the board chair had sent an email asking them to please wait to say anything until staff was notified at the end of the day, and that was posted before staff was notified. And the second posting was also an email that the superintendent had sent to all of the staff members in the district after Alan's passing, and just expressing his thoughts, and really, that was meant for the district employees. And policy P. ninety fifty for the chair says specifically that the chair is the spokesperson for the Board of Education, unless they designate someone else. And I just really felt posting on Facebook, that is communication to the public, that is public communication, and I just felt that that was a total disregard for the office of the Chair of the Board of Ed, and just disrespectful to the employees. That email that was sent out was not meant to be posted on Facebook. And then there was another post on Facebook in regards to the high school heat issue, and Lynn was at the Board of Ed meeting where it was discussed at the Budget Subcommittee exactly what that whole process was, but all of her posts were directing it to the Town Council as if it was the Town Council's fault that there wasn't heat at the high school, after we had a discussion in the Budget Subcommittee meeting, which I attended. And I attended the October board meeting so that I could see how she interacted with the board and everything else. So, I just wanted to get that out there because, unfortunately, when it's time to vote, my vote will be changing, and that's the basis for my vote.
So, you have, you have all of this happening in one, in one meeting?
Well, in one one, from the time she was sworn in to.
And there's no learning curve here?
Well, when she was at the meeting, she expressed how she's been reading a lot of information, and the, I just felt that the, in the board chair handled issues that she had talked about at the board meeting, and was willing to give her information. If she didn't have it, she said she had it, she read it. Obviously, she was not taking it into consideration, in my viewpoint. Other people may think differently, but that's the way I saw it, being at the meetings.
You don't think that this is something that the board chair can, can discuss, can discuss with her? It's one meeting, there is a learning curve, God knows, I'm still learning, and I've been down this end of the.
I, I'm not, I'm, personally, I'm not sure how objective she could be, as she stated.
Seems rather hard-hearted, Rose.
No, it's not hard-hearted. I mean, I listened to her at the board meeting, and when they had to reappoint a board chair, you know, five minutes into the meeting, she came out and she told Sarah Quilfrill that she felt that she could not support her because Sarah could not be impartial. I thought that was pretty hard, too. So, I, I mean, I was at the meetings, I was giving her the benefit of the doubt, but there were just too many things coming down the line, for me, and that's my personal opinion. I'm not speaking for anyone else.
Personally, I know that social media is an issue with everyone in society. I try to avoid it like a plague because it tends to be one quite often. I can't believe we're making a determination on a person's ability to sit on a board or commission based on a posting on Facebook. I don't particularly like Facebook, I try not to use it, but the determination of a person's ability to sit on a board or commission based on what opinion or statement they may have placed on Facebook seemed really kind of spurious to me. I understand that the, the majority of this commission has changed, and if you as a party have decided that this is the way you're going, so be it. I obviously can't change your minds, but I would say that, that it's kind of a shallow excuse to avoid a reappointment, which is a democratic reappointment to that particular board, and this is the person that we feel that would fill the seat properly, and we think clearly, in view of the, the constitution of that board, there's no detriment to either the people of the town of North Ramford or the Republican Party. There is no way that this person can do anything on that board without the joiner of one or more Republicans on any decision she makes. Clearly, you control that board as you do this Town Council, and you're free to do as you choose. I understand that, but I just really find that making a judgment based on one meeting that a person attended and perhaps said something that was.
Wasn't.
Maybe less than entirely appropriate under the circumstances is not really a fair basis for judging that person's character or ability.
It wa, it wasn't just the one Board of Ed meeting.
There was comments that it was witch hunting, there, there's a lot of comments on Facebook. You look at Facebook.
I try not to.
Well, I'm telling you, there's a lot of comments on there.
So, as you all know.
A lot of comments are inappropriate.
As you all know, I'm, yeah, I can't, I'm sitting here with a blank screen, okay? 'Cause that's how much I'm good with computers and stuff, so I'm not on Facebook, couldn't care less what anyone says. You wanna say something to my face, I'll listen to you. But I'm not supporting her because of comments she made right here. And we all know that the Board of Ed is under, you know, whatever you wanna call it, investigation or whatever. The further we look, the more stuff has been done wrong.
the further we look, the more stuff has been done wrong, and it's been done wrong for a decade, so we're trying to get to the bottom of that, and I can't support somebody who stood here when we were talking about the superintendent's vacation pay, that still nobody's been able to prove to me that it's, they had any right to pay him that, it's not in his contract, but, you know, we'll see where that goes, she stood here and said, "It's only thirty-seven hundred dollars, what's the big deal, move on," and then she went on to say that the superintendent is her best friend, and I don't know how we can put a board, I'm not gonna put a board member on in this time that number one, doesn't think that thirty-seven hundred dollars is a lot of money that was misappropriated, misused, or whatever the final result is of that thirty-seven hundred, and tens of thousands of dollars more, and, you know, you don't put, you don't run for a board, you don't get appointed because you wanna go protect your best friend. We just had an election, anybody could've thrown their name in and run for the election and got elected to it, so that's why I'm not gonna be supporting her tonight, nothing to do with Facebook.
I'd like to follow up a question.
Roll call?
Mayor Judy.
No.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
No.
Counselor Candelora.
No.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
No.
Counselor Diglion.
Obscene.
Counselor Zampano.
No.
Moving on to unfinished business, discussion in action. Nothing listed, new business, discussion in action, town council meeting scheduled for two thousand and eighteen.
They're already approved of.
Did they do that?
Yeah, I believe they did.
On their points.
Town Council and Board of Education Subcommittee schedule.
I think this is an issue probably that we need to, once the board gets their subcommittees set, the Board of Ed, 'cause I know that that's something that they'll be working on, maybe we can talk to them and come up with a schedule, a joint schedule based on who's on your committee and when you would like to meet on that, so I'd like to just table that and bring that back at another meeting.
Next item is naming of cross-country home course in memory of Floyd Parnas.
Yeah, this is a request that came in, I believe there are representatives here this evening, I would like to speak to the council about that.
Hi. Hello, everyone, I'm Jared Jameson, I'm a senior at the high school and captain of the cross-country team, I have been with Floyd for, would've been two years this year if he was still around, we asked to instate a sign for the cross-country course, it will be named Floyd Parnas Cross Country Course commemorating his devotion to cross-country. The course was his pride and joy, he maintained the course for several years on end, on his own, as well as with help of the team each year. Over the years, he perfected the course, turned it into one of the best-known courses in our conference, ask any of our coaches, or other coaches in the conference, they'll agree. To show how much of a perfectionist he is, I can recall an event of the last, two years ago, during the summer before cross-country started, we were trying to perfect the course, and we must've spent forty-five minutes in the exact same patch of mulch trying to prevent any cause of injury from slippage or just any runner fault, Floyd made us keep going over the exact same patch to make sure no one could've gotten injured on it. He was, he respected the course a lot, he was always calling in reports for people with quads and bikes going around and vandalizing the course, he loved it to death. There was no person who was dedicated to the course more than Floyd, so I think he deserves this naming, he earned it, in my opinion. Sorry, I've got quite a little bit to say about this, to show how humble Floyd was, he was nominated for the Shining Star Award from the education.
Foundation.
Sorry. Nomination, nomination, and he would not even take the award of, because he thought it was, he was just doing his own, the kind of civic responsibility. I would like to call up Chris Selander, the creator of the course, to have a quick word on this subject.
How's everyone doing?
Good.
Yeah, I don't think there's a better idea than to name the course after Floyd, me, Floyd, Mike Ferrucci, my father, a little help from Mr. Marola, got that course going, had so much time in that thing, and even like Floyd used to say, running around the parking lots was nothing, everyone was gonna get hurt, or it's bad for your body, kills the hips, he wanted that course, we made that course, we have so many hours in that course, I can't even begin to tell you, I think it would be the best thing in the world to have a sign up there and dedicate it to Floyd.
Also, Mike Medewell has a quick word to say about this as well. Hello. So, when I met Floyd Parnas four years ago, I could have never predicted the profound impact he'd have on my life and the lives of others in the community. As he did for me and for many others before me, Floyd transformed ordinary high school students into confident leaders and amazing athletes. However, he didn't do this through force and intimidation, rather, he did it through kindness and motivation. He cared about us kids as if we were his own, even going as far out of his way to check on one of how his athletes was doing after suffering a serious accident. He didn't do this because he was his coach, he did this out of the kindness of his heart. As far as the cross-country course, it's universally known by all teams in Connecticut as one of the best courses, and that isn't by any coincidence. Floyd put countless hours of hard work into the course to make it the renowned course that it's known for being today. I learned just how much effort he puts into the course after a summer of assisting him set up the potato and corn festival race, as well as throughout the year setting up for the meats. He was out there for days at a time to make sure the ground that we ran on was the cleanest, most organized dirt in all of Connecticut, and I've never seen anyone chase an ATV as passionately as Floyd Parnas did, nor did he keep it that way. Ultimately, without Floyd, the course would be nowhere near the amazing, well-known cross-country course it is today, and for that reason, I can only imagine the course being named in his honor from here on out, ensuring his name and legacy never fade from North Branford. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a couple other members from the cross-country team, if any of them want to say a quick word before I talk a little bit more, now would be the time.
I'm a junior on the cross-country team, I ran for two years under Floyd, and this will be my third year running, and I think it would be like awesome to change the course to like under Floyd's name, because Floyd welcomed everyone to run, no matter how skilled they were, and I think just giving the course that welcoming atmosphere would be very good for the team, and also, I think that, sorry, having like my senior year and next year's seniors, or I'm a junior, so for the next two years, that's gonna be the last kids that were under Floyd's team, after that, it's gonna be a team that only knew Barry as a coach, so I think it's important for them to still recognize Floyd for what he did, even if they didn't know him or like weren't part of his team personally, it's still important for him to have an effect on the team.
Can you just state your name for the record, please?
Patrick McConie.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Sullivan, I'm a cross-country girls' team captain, I've been doing, I've been on, I've been running since sophomore year, I, my first season with Floyd was my indoor season that year, and I know he's had a profound effect on my life and my love for running, which I'm hoping to continue into college, and I think, you know, he's just had such a huge impact on this community, not just with athletes, you know, his athletes, but with, you know, town events like Potato and Corn Festival, which, you know, everyone's involved in, I think, you know, he had such a big impact, should be recognized, so, yeah.
I feel like the placement of a sign proclaiming Floyd Parnas Cross Country Course would be the least we could possibly do in memory of him, this tribute is towards the humble man we all knew, both personally through running and just being an active member of the community, the sign, payment-wise, could be raised by us. That's about all I have to say, any questions or whenever it happens next?
My suggestion is a subcommittee consisting of two council members, two Board of Education members, and maybe yourself from the cross-country team, decide in on the signage, where the signage should be, how the name should be, and you can get the details worked out, and then come back to us at a, you know, a later meeting. Yeah, and probably somebody from the Auger family since it's their property. So, committee member, subcommittee of six members, and, you know, we should, should be able to proceed once we get the logistics worked out.
Thank you very much.
So, if you don't mind volunteering.
Of course, I'd love to.
Not that we're pressuring you, but. Okay.
Thank you very much.
I just wanna say, thank all of you, and I could see your passion, and, you know, I do share in your loss as well, so, thank you.
I will volunteer to be on that committee from the council.
Anybody else? Tom and Rose, and maybe since the chairperson's here from the Board of Ed, maybe we could get two Board of Education members? Oh, we got a runner. All right, and then.
We'll have to contact some.
Yeah, we just need somebody from, we'll get somebody from the Auger family. All right, moving on, for you FO, Freedom of Information Commission guidance on meeting definitions, there's a thing in the packet.
Yeah, there's a memo I put together based on a conversation with Tom Hennig, and I apologize, it didn't make the electronic version, so it should be in paper form in your folders, but just kinda goes through the explanation and definitions of meetings and.
Caucuses.
Caucuses.
So, Michael, when I was talking, did you ever find the definition of a non-meeting?
No, it just refers to what's a meeting and, and I guess what's not a meeting, but.
Right, and basically, any scheduled meeting is a meeting, the way you read it.
There are certain meetings that are exempt from FOI, I guess is the best way to say, it's not a, still a meeting, it's not a non-meeting, it's just exempt from FOI, so personnel searches and other, as you know, we've been in executive sessions and so forth.
Right.
And caucuses, obviously, are caucuses and are a meeting, but not subject to FOI.
Right, so, since this is in front of us, and the town clerk is in the room, so if I say anything wrong, she can correct me, so, you know, going back, and I was a little disappointed with you, Michael, when, after I spent a half a day talking to you about what we all, you know, figured was an illegal meeting between four Democratic council meeting members, a member of the Board of Ed, and a past board chair, and when I asked you about it, you said, "Oh," and I think you told me, "Oh, Joe Fawnin got back, and he said it was a non-meeting," and I said, "Well, Joe was sitting here when John Jesman," 'cause a town manager ago, used to, you know, Richard Brandigan used to love to have these non-meetings, and John finally said, "Look, guys, stop, there's no such thing as a non-meeting, if there's a scheduled meeting, it's not a meeting," okay? So, we, the council sat here and learned that lesson, now I beat that into your head that day, told you to check with the town clerk, and then we talked about, "Oh, well, it was a caucus, it was a democratic caucus," and I said, "Again, go to this," couldn't have been a caucus, because as the town clerk told us several times, a caucus is the same board, same party, it's not two boards, it's same board, same party, it's not a past board chair, so, this meeting that they had, which number one, went against, you know, we had said we weren't gonna investigate anyway, but that's neither here nor there, it was an illegal meeting, and two days later, after I talked with you about this, you send out an answer to somebody saying, "Oh, it was a caucus, non-meeting," and so, so, you know, I'm a very busy man, I don't need to waste my time trying to keep you on the straight and narrow, when I get something, when, when, you know, again, prove me wrong, or look at this document, okay, it wasn't a non-meeting because it was a scheduled meeting, it wasn't a caucus because it was a Board of Ed member and a past chair, so, you know, call it what it is, say the Democrats, four of the Democratic council members, a Democratic board member, had an illegal meeting, okay, that's what it was, so, this is part of the reason why this is here, so that, you know, maybe in black and white, we can all educate ourselves and stop having illegal meetings.
Since my name was brought up in that comment that you just made, let me respond, I didn't render an opinion or make a statement to anybody that I was part of a non-meeting or a caucus, at no point was I asked whether or not there was any obligation to comply with any specific statute, and I never discussed that with anybody.
Okay, so I got misinformation on who said what it was?
I don't know what you got, but the statement you just made that this was an illegal meeting, because you now have a piece of paper in your hand that says, "Without a ruling by the courts, this matter is still open," I don't know how you reached that conclusion.
No. I reached that conclusion from sitting here, listening to the town attorney tell us four years, four years ago.
The town attorney is not here now, that was four years ago, it was not characterized as a non-meeting by me, and there is nothing in this piece of paper that says that was an illegal meeting. If anything, what this says is.
It was a meeting.
It's inconclusive, meetings happen all the time, there's nothing illegal about meetings, so I take issue with the characterization that it was an illegal meeting, I take issue with the fact that I'm being accused of making a recommendation, or giving an opinion, or a statement to anybody else, which I didn't do, so you can reach whatever conclusion you like, but don't accuse me of conducting an illegal non-meeting, unless you have something.
Well, what sort of a meeting did you have?
I had a meeting, period.
Well, at our last, I'm confused, because at our last council meeting, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I sat here and listened to how Marie and Dan worked hard all night, and everyone stayed quiet, no one said you had a meeting, I mean, that's a fact, it's on tape, so, why is, I don't understand the cloak and dagger, I guess, like why was it so secret?
Anthony, I had nothing to do with whatever they did on.
Well, you sat here when they unloaded all of that.
Do I have an obligation to respond to whatever everybody says? I had nothing to do with what they chose to do on the internet, I was not part of it, I didn't know about it until I received that report that night, at the same time you did.
It was about the presentation of that whole thing, it was misrepresented.
There was no misrepresentation?
Absolutely.
Well, you characterize it as you choose. Well, you characterize it as you choose. There was no misrepresentation by me. The one thing I don't do is lie about anything.
I'm not saying you lied, but you...
What's a misrepresentation then, Anthony?
The way it was given to all, well...
The misrepresentation was, was having the meeting. So first of all, the public can't meet in that room. So, the town councilors were meeting in that room.
And where are you going with that, Al?
That you guys had an illegal meeting?
It was not an illegal meeting. I take issue with your characterization of it being illegal.
Okay, well, I didn't get it from the piece of paper, we actually talked to the guy at FOI.
Okay.
And he concluded that it was an illegal meeting.
Point out to me...
Well, how can you have, it wasn't, you had a meeting, Joe. You didn't have a caucus, you didn't have a...
Al, I'm asking you to point out to me your authority for it being an illegal meeting.
It says right here, uh...
Where?
FOI sees, uh, Freedom of Information is convening in an assembly and members of the same party, same board, same commission. Okay? You didn't even have that. You had a Board of Education member, you had four town council members, and you had a past Republican Board Chair. I mean, it wasn't even the same party, or same board or commission. So you can't call it a caucus.
So, Joe, you wouldn't need it to be taken minutes?
My, you're focusing on the definition of caucus. I didn't say it was a caucus either.
Well, um...
And I didn't tell anybody to say it was a caucus.
But Dan Arman said it was a caucus.
All right, well, then you've got to take it up with Dan. I certainly didn't give that recommendation to anybody.
We had a conversation, I don't believe it was the last town council meeting, there was one previous to that, about FOI. And I stated then, and I'll reiterate now, that Tom Hennig is the Public Information Officer for the FOI Commission. And when we were talking about, um, uh, the FOI at that time, and we were talking about, uh, issues, I said that Tom Hennig does not give advice, he cites the statute. And that's what has happened for you here. You've been given a copy of the statute, and you in fact give it to us. So, what you have here is a memo from the town manager, where he paraphrases things that, uh, the Public Information Officer gave, which is fine, and a copy of the statute from Connecticut General statutes. They did not render any opinion that this was an illegal meeting. You're characterizing it as such, and you are not, in fact, the deliberative body in that regard. So, if you care to pursue that, then you should take it up with the FOI Commission, which does in fact render such decisions. But otherwise, you're just squabbling, and I understand your objections, I've heard them, but you have really no right to seek any kind of, uh, characterization of it as an illegal meeting, but you certainly can request that the correct deliberative body investigates.
So, since you people can't read and comprehend, that's what we'll do.
Well, I, I can read and comprehend.
Oh, and that seems to run on your side, is the...
Well, I, I know you'd like to say that, Al, but I can read and comprehend, and I just dispute, it was an illegal meeting, because you held it, you didn't have minutes, it wasn't published, so if it wasn't a caucus, and it wasn't a, a, uh, non-meeting, which it can't be, either one of those, it was a meeting. So it needed to be scheduled, posted with minutes and all that. Okay? And if you guys can't see how that's illegal, what you did, then, you know, you know, go ahead and pick on the poor dumb farmer, but I will prove you wrong.
I didn't recall you any, any kind of...
Okay? So I will prove you wrong, like I have many times. You included, Joe.
Al, I don't want to make this personal.
It's not.
It's not going to be, but you guys want me to get it proof to you. We'll have another attorney sitting here, and I'll go to FOI, and I will prove it to you. Lights out?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, um, move on. Review of state budget and municipal revenue with the Board of Education.
Yeah, this was, uh, again, uh, kind of crafted, uh, put together before we knew where the state was. Uh, I think we have a much better understanding of where we are from a revenue standpoint from the state, although they are making the final vote in the House tomorrow. Uh, Anthony and I were on a conference call with Representative Candelora today. Uh, he doesn't think there's be any changes, he thinks it's a pretty straightforward vote. Uh, what we do have to account for is a 50% reduction in the renters rebate, uh, which is a tweak in the language, and that's going through. So that puts us on the hook for, I believe, 21, 21,000, um, in addition to the, the cut. So I, I think our total expo, or our total reduction comes out to be about 454, 452,000, um, and adding the renters rebate, so, um, Benny's going to give a, a more municipal run specific tomorrow, uh, and, and I had some preliminary today, uh, but we look in much better shape than we did, uh, a few months ago. So, um, I think, uh, in a conversation with, with Benny, he was suggesting that, uh, he's available and open to come to talk to the council, and maybe possibly a joint, uh, budget workshop with the Board of Education, to talk about the future, and what the state looks like going forward in the next year and the year after, uh, which I think is probably going to be very helpful, and it's probably something we should do.
So how much did we end up with as a cut from ECS in the current year, out of that 450 some thousand?
Right. Our, our net is, we're going from about a five and a half million dollar hole we projected last month, it's about a million four to the good, budget to actual. So, the proposal is, how do you do that, a million four? Well, we took about $400,000 extra out of fund balance this year, we used to do 350, we did 750 this year. I would propose putting the $400,000 back into fund balance, use that million dollars towards next year's capital improvement plan, one-time injection, doesn't create a hole the following year. So, it's very good news for us, again, it's from a five and a half million dollar deficit to a million four, positive, budget to actual. We, we predicted, we had gotten about eight million dollars last year of ECS, it was about 4.8 million dollars, uh, in, back in February. We ended up with seven and a half, but we lost a million and a half of special education money. So, all in total, it's about a million four positive variance, compared to where we thought we were going to be at five and a half million dollars in the hole.
Okay.
We should have a discussion, maybe, about replenishing the contingencies, maybe we can rule taxes back. You know?
Unless we get the budget season.
Yeah.
Would you prefer a, uh, if you like the idea of the, the budget-type workshop and planning ahead, getting a jump on it for December, would you prefer a special night or piggybacking on like, say, December 5th meeting, uh, and maybe a, a six o'clock workshop before the seven o'clock, or would you prefer...
We only have one meeting, we have two meetings in December.
We have, we have two in December.
Right.
Yeah, so if you make it, um, the second meeting, which is just the town council meeting, it'd probably be a little lighter.
Okay.
But we need to get information ahead of time, you know, so we could review it.
Sure.
Not, not at our desk.
Well, the other thing right now is the Board of Ed is starting their budget process already, um, and so, I guess I would be more in favor of sooner rather than later, because they're already in the process of having the administrators, um, look at their budgets, putting things together, um, I, I know they, we did talk on Monday night at the budget workshop, they had their calendar of events, but, you know, they're going to have things kind of buttoned up early January, so if we can give them more advanced notice, rather than later notice, I just think that would be helpful to them.
So you're looking for November?
Well, no, I was looking to do the December, the December 5th me, our first meeting in December, rather than our second meeting in December, um, on that. And just so that they have time, because they're in the, they do a lot of their budget over the Christmas break, so that they can present to the Board and the public, starting in January.
Will they give you enough time?
Unless you guys see differently.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly have enough material provided, and, uh, hopefully that Benny's schedule permits, but he said he was pretty flexible, so more notice we can give him, and, and maybe I would, six o'clock sound all right, in terms of...
That, yeah, that, that's fine with me, I mean, I don't know about the rest of the council, but, but, yeah, but that's fine, but I, I just, I mean, because I know, you know, besides ECS being cut in the current budget, I know in the past year or so, there were all, also mid-year cuts to the, the budget, and we just took, and they were basically ECS, it was ECS money, and I think between the two cuts, we're probably at about 400,000 or a little over, which the town absorbed and took it out of the general fund. And we can't continue to keep doing that all the time, so I think the, the more we have the dialogue with the Board of Ed as to how they can help us, so that we aren't always taking, dipping into our savings to account for that money. Um, because basically, that's what's happening now again this year, um, even though the, the budget was so late, and yes, it, it's positive again, but that 1.4 million, basically that equals what our debt service money was, that we were going to put into capital this budget year that we couldn't, because we used it to keep the mill rate lower than what it ended up be, you know, it would have been higher had we not used that money in there. So, basically, we're, we're taking that, we're still taking ECS money that was cut, and we're still funding it out of general fund, but I think we need to have that dialogue with the Board as to how they can help us with that. So we're not always funding it from the savings. Okay?
So are we talking to the Board of Ed tonight, or we're not? They're here.
We can, you can ask them any question.
So, I would just say that it's, and I see Don Winicki is in the back there, but, yeah. If I was on that board, I would have a real problem with how the budget has been done, um, and would hope that with some new people there, a new broom sweeps clean, and that you guys are going to come up with a real budget. Because I don't know how you can fund all these discrepancies that weren't budgeted, and, I mean, I know you get a 30 million dollar pool, um, but it just, you know, there's lots of money that wasn't in the budget and somehow got funded, and I think that, that, that you're, you know, maybe you guys, if you have time, should be looking at the format of your budget, and maybe try and create a true budget. That's just, that's just me.
Go ahead. Yeah. You have to come up, you have to come up.
All right, Sarah Querfeld, Board of Ed. Is there anything specific that this council would like to see in the budget format that we present to you? In other words, Al just said, "Look at, look at our budget format, et cetera." So is there something that you would like to see differently in the way we present our budget?
Accurate accounting.
Are you talking more specific line items? Or you...
Hey, I don't know how you get there.
Okay.
Well...
I thought if, you know, I just thought I would ask.
We kind of do that already, though, operating capital and, um...
Okay, thank you. I think part, I, I think part of it also is, um, when you look at the history of the line item transfers over the last few years, there always seems to be a large amount of money that is taken out of benefits, and then put into, whether it's equipment or building improvements, that type of thing. And I, and I understand it's very, because you're planning a year and a half ahead of time, and, and it happens on the town side also that we have line item transfers. But I think if there was more of a outline of, here are things that we would, that we need to do, are, in building improvements, and if there's excess money, or whatever else, as to items that you're looking at to do, because there never seems to be discussion about those types of items during your budget workshops. I mean, you have your capital items that are in there that come forward to the Board of Ed, I mean, to the town council, but things that end up getting done in building improvements or equipment and things like that are, all of a sudden, there's extra money in areas, but there was never any discussion along the way about them. And all of a sudden, they just pop up. But it, they seem like they're items that you would have known about. It's not something that, something just broke down and it was an emergency repair, it's something that was there.
All right, so you're talking about end of year line item transfers, um, from benefits to...
Well, well, things get done, I mean, and whether they got done in April, May, or June, or sometime during the year, your line item transfers all happen at the end of the year, so they could have taken place anytime during the year.
So you would prefer to see line item transfers during the course of the year?
Probably a little bit more frequently, just so that you guys haven't, are also aware of them happening, and like, a discussion of what's being done with that money, you know, where that, why you need those line item transfers? What type of things? Are you doing asbestos abatement, you, you know, um, unit ventilators, whatever the items may be?
Now, you do, when you have a budget the size of our budget, it, it isn't prudent to run it too close to a zero balance at the end of the year. You really need to have some extra money left over, because we, we, and, Mr. Winicki does a very good job of making certain that we end the year in the black. Um, you don't want to get too close, because unexpected things can happen, and we don't want to be in the red. So, but I do understand what you're saying about, um, more frequent reporting of line items.
Well, you know, when you have a couple hundred thousand dollars, that isn't, to me, that's not ending really clo, I mean, yes, you have an amount that you transfer, but when you spend that kind of money on other things, but there's no discussion as to when you do those projects and how they're getting paid for, and it's just taken care of at the end of the year in a line item transfer, the transparency is a little hard to follow.
Okay. All right, and then if you think of other specific things that would be helpful in the format before the December 5th meeting, where I think we're coming back to talk to you again, and, you know, feel free to just send them to us, and we can, you know, look at doing that, because we are committed to making certain that we have transparency, and that the budget is easy to follow and easy to understand, and that we don't miss things that, um, are there and we're not aware of.
And then, just one thing, Sarah, before you go. Perhaps, um, I don't know how anybody else feels, but maybe we could start looking at sharing resources more, um, you know, whether we look at privatizing, like cafeteria, or, I mean, I, I think we, we're at a time where we start having to be creative a little bit, and, you know, look at how we can, I mean, cut costs, um, whether it's in finance, we go to, like, I've heard other towns have one finance director. Um, I, I mean, I don't know all these things will work, but I think perhaps it's, you know, a conversation that should start. Um, I've seen some towns share attorneys. There's a whole host of areas that I think we should look at as the financial body. And I'd love your thoughts, or, you know, your Board's thoughts, I mean, you don't do it now, but, you know, perhaps that's something we can start looking at.
Now, is that something that the Board's communication, the Board Council Communication Committee can work, work on? And I can certainly bring this back, and Don is here, we'll bring this back to the Board... We'll bring this back to the board because we certainly want to cooperate and help save the taxpayers' money while we do what we need to do for the kids.
Absolutely. We want to support you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, citizen statements and petitions.
Okay, this is, this is in regard to our town's memorial field. You might like to know that there are people in town, the descendants of a man whose memory was supposed to have been memorialized by Memorial Field. His name was placed on a sign, Colter Memorial Field. The sign was misplaced somewhere along the way. Now, his descendants are trying to get the sign put back up. And it seems to be passed back and forth and back and forth. The last I heard, the Park and Recreation Commission had approved the replacing of the sign specifying who this field was named after. It's not just Memorial Field. And it goes through my mind as I was listening to all of the testimonials for Mr. Parness. And I was thinking back years ago, there were many citizens in North Branford who likewise spoke in favor of Mr. Colter. And I'm sure that they intended for this field to always be named Colter Memorial Field. And I hope that in the future, someday, there won't be Parness's descendants in the same situation. I don't understand what's the big deal. It's just a sign. The Park and Recreation Commission approved it. And I think it's been done before. As I understand, it's gone through this cycle several times. Now, there's an 80-year-old citizen in North Branford, along with other members of the family. But this 80-year-old citizen told me she hopes, before she dies, that she can see that sign put back up. And it's my understanding, the Park and Recreation Commission approved it. And now it's in your hands. And I don't know why it's not on your agenda.
It hasn't, it hasn't got to our hands yet. Michael, do you know anything about that?
Yeah, it's in the process and it just had to take after the election. So, I believe Rec Commission has deliberated on it. I'm not sure whether the recommendation was or not, but it, there is some file and there's some work on it. So, it's coming.
Is this something being handled separately? Or is this something that is now subsumed with the rest of our inquiries on town signs at borders?
No, separately.
It's gonna be a separate issue?
Yeah. Yeah, there is, there is documentation and history of exactly what she just said about the sign and recognition. So, there's a file we have and Rec was starting with that deliberation and looking at that. I'll review with Lauren tomorrow. And it might be one of those issues that's on the agenda for December. If it's ready.
You'll do that in the managers' report?
Yeah.
Okay. When Mike and I were playing Little League, our schedule used to say, "Colter Field."
It was a memorial. It was Colter Field.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, and there's actually another name escapes me for the tennis courts as well. But I'll have that, it's part of the file.
Elizabeth Kaplan, 1936, Middleton Avenue, Norfolk. I noticed on the agenda tonight that you didn't have an opportunity for citizen statements. And I looked back on the, on the website and I looked back at a few of the meetings. And in your typical town council meeting, right after the town managers' report, you have correspondence and citizen statement where citizens can speak to any other things on the agenda. So, I didn't know if you were gonna go back to that or I believe you adopted a new agenda this evening where citizens can only speak at the end of the agenda? And if I'm incorrect, please correct me.
No, no. There's a citizen statement right after Water Pollution Control Authority.
I thought that had to do only with Water Pollution Control Authority.
Right, that deals with Water Pollution Control. And at the end of the agenda is citizen statements and petitions.
Right, in the past, all the meetings up until now, if you, I have the website on my phone. I looked it up. And there was two opportunities for the public to speak after the, after the Water Pollution Control Authority. And I just feel for transparency and for the public's benefit to be able to speak out on issues that are coming before you and their concerns, I think it's important to keep that in the agenda as well as at the end of the agenda, so people can summarize at the end. So, I hope you do vote next month or next meeting to put that back on the agenda.
Well, it'd be, but this is an organizational meeting, so it's a little bit different.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure going forward that citizens do have the opportunities to speak. And also, personally, I'm very disappointed in the decision tonight not to put Lynn back on the Board of, Board of Education. From a personal standpoint, someone that is a community activist, the way she has, and the goals that she set with Matt's Mission and the Food Pantry and the hundreds of people that I knew the Food Pantry serves on a, on a weekly basis. And she garnered the support of many individuals in town and outside of town to make these two organizations very successful. And I think if that's an indication of somebody that is unqualified to go on a border commission, I feel very badly because I think she's a dynamic individual and speaks her mind. And, and I'm okay with that. And everyone has a learning curve in life. And again, I really am very disappointed at the, the, tonight's vote. And I hope going forward, things can be thought of in a much more amiable light amongst people.
Look Potter, 1251 Middleton Avenue. I was glad to see the kids come and talk about Floyd. What a class act he was. We had to coexist with Floyd every potato fest, with the hayrides using the same route that he was using for the cross-country, you know, track and in the woods and stuff. And his kids, he worked twice as hard as his kids and his kids would work as hard as he did, only to have it overnight torn up by ATVs. And Franny would kind of jump through hoops that morning, deliver chips where they could to try to straighten things out. It was an ongoing, it still is an ongoing problem. I don't think Floyd ever gave up. He would walk the course early in the morning. And we had, you know, we would stay to the right of his poles. His kids would run on the left of the poles. We could coexist and we were great. Got, I got to know him fairly well. And, all I can say is a class act. I mean, he just, he would get right back down with the, by hand. They weren't doing machinery by hand. They would take their rakes and their shovels and they'd go back out and they would try to recondition it. And everybody on Sunday enjoyed the race. So, one thought I had is, how about if you named the road from where you come into the farm and you go between the bullpen and the cow barn, and the road that goes out into the field? Name that like Floyd Parness Way or something. Something that's got his name, because that's where the race starts and that's where the race ends. They have to come over the bridge and up that rocky hill. And so, what better way than put a permanent name on that stretch of path or road, whatever you want to call it? Because the man, I learned a lot from him. His kids worshipped him. You know, I can't get my son motivated. The way he motivated the kids, they, they had no problem doing whatever he asked them to do, because he knew, he knew, they knew he respected him. And, I mean, he's a great loss to the community. He died doing what he loved. I hope I can do that. Not now, though. Another thing, we always talk about the Board of Ed and Town Council joint meetings. How about, rather than scheduling them when you need them, how about canceling when you don't? Put 12 into the year. And then, because little problems that could be ironed out at that level will not become huge problems. If you, you know, I tell my wife like the car, when you hear a clink or a clank, if you don't take care of it, it's gonna become a clunk. Same thing here, if you catch something in the bud, you might even know, not know you're catching something. But if you have the meeting and something comes up, it's not gonna mushroom into an atomic bomb cloud. So, schedule them. And if you don't have something, then cancel them. But I know, I think, they, that you need to talk more. I've been saying that for years, you know that. It's nothing new for me, for you guys, but... And again, I think, you know, we have good people on both sides. We've got a great town. I mean, I wouldn't want to live anywhere else. I grew up in Guilford. I wouldn't want to go back to the mess they have over there and other towns. So, I mean, we're doing good, let's keep doing good. And congratulations to all of you that were elected or reelected. Welcome to the lion's den. Thank you.
Hi, Lynn Reardon, 33 Drell Farm Road. First of all, I do want to congratulate you on a very well-fought campaign. You totally deserved to win, so congratulations. George, Marie, and Joe, thank you for your support. Liz and anybody else. She might be disappointed, but if I'm being totally honest, I'm relieved. I am grateful that I am not going to be serving on the Board of Ed. It is not for me. I'm not gonna go rose and go tit for tat for what you said and what's truth and what's not. I never said Scott Schoolmaker was my best friend. But you do tend to just throw things out there and say what you want and then everybody gets to hear, whether it's truth or not. But I'm not here to debate all of that. I just want to say thank you very much because it was very well-thought-out, well-planned, very executed and I'm grateful.
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?